Very well, good evening everyone and welcome to the Wareham zoning board of appeal. Tonight is Wednesday, May 23rd, 2018 at 6:35 PM. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Make a roll, call my far right, Wilma Engerman, town planner Ken Buckland, our clerk Jim Akabachi, my far left alternate member Jake Morrison, and Carl Baptiste Senior, myself, Nazir Akalasi, the chairman. Tonight Jake will be sitting on the seat for Jen Kendrick because she's out. So we do have five board member. We do have quorum. So we're gonna just start with the public hearings. I'm just gonna get one out of the way. 14-18 for Mr. Al Baba, 307 Oak Cranberry Highway. Attorney Bello called me, can't make it. So gonna push it to the 13 unless it's too much, Ken.
There's a lot to do on a 13.
All right, push it after that. 27.
June 27?
Yeah, we're gonna need a motion for that.
So moved.
So we have a motion to move 14-18 for Mr. Afif Al Baba at 307 Oak Cranberry Highway till June 27. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay.
You think you might have July on?
Yeah. What do you think, in Duxbury or something?
It says approved meeting minutes on here but we don't have a copy.
All right, very good. All right, we're gonna go 13-18 site plan review, Family Dental.
Mr. Chairman, you had one more before that, the minor modification, 5-18 Linda and Tom Hannon.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. Yeah, the minor modification, 5-18 Linda and Tom Hannon, are they?
27 from head of conference in Nevada. 27.
Is that this?
That's this.
Yeah.
You got new stuff for us?
Yeah.
Give this back. I'll take the new stuff.
Just everybody know, on the 27, Carl has a convention. He won't be here, he'll be in Nevada, so.
Is it fun, can we come?
If you wanna go to Reno.
Reno?
In June.
In June? No.
It's hot.
No.
Is that a police convention? All right, name and address for records and let's proceed.
Yes, I'm Bill Lockwood from Lockwood Architects and with me are Linda and Tom Hannon, my clients.
Okay. What you got?
This is referencing a property at, what address?
62 West Boulevard.
Thank you.
So what's, when did you get the permit?
Well, we haven't got a permit yet, but.
A decision was made on April 25th.
Decision was made and.
It's April?
In April, on April 11th, we met, the decision was, came out, I believe, the 25th.
Okay.
And in part of that decision, we imposed a height restriction of 27 feet, which we've strived mightily to try to get the project within and we're here asking for a little bit of additional relief, a little bit of relief from that particular structure. We're looking to go to 28.5 feet instead of 27 feet. That's going to be six and a half feet more than the, or less than the statute maximum.
The bylaw allows, the bylaw allows 35 feet?
The bylaw allows 35 feet. You, as part of your decision.
We imposed a restriction of 27 and you're asking for 28 and a half.
Asking for 28 and a half, which we consider to be a minor modification.
That's the average height.
That, no, that is the height to the peak to the average grade.
Right.
Wasn't there?
Just to the peak.
And you have before you a comparative spreadsheet identified existing building height, the scheme which we submitted the last time, and what we're proposing this evening.
But if you recall, we had opposition from the neighbor, that's why we put the restriction. Are the, are the neighbors here? They're not here because they're not notified.
They were not notified. And it's.
They weren't notified.
No, because it's a minor.
Yeah.
So how many feet you wanna add?
Foot and a half. Foot and a half.
Oh, I saw eight and a half. Okay, a foot and a half.
A foot and a half to beyond where you said we could be.
We said hold it at 27. By law allows 35. He wants to go to 28 and a half, a foot and a half more than what, we restricted him to 27.
Okay, okay.
Because we had opposition.
Right, but, oh, all right. What's the pitch on the roof?
The pitch on the roof is 1012 now, it was 1212.
Okay, what's your height, what's your studs inside, what's the size of the studs, what studs you, the studs? Do you use an 88 inch studs?
We're looking for, looking to get an eight foot ceiling.
Okay.
The client, clients are gonna be spending a great deal of money on this structure and they'd like to have eight foot ceilings.
You can go to an eight pitch?
I believe that we could certainly do an eight pitch, but it certainly would not fit into the community, which is a community of basically 12 pitches. I think we can get by with a 10 pitch without, you know, looking out of sorts, but they were actually going from a structure that has a very low pitch on it and one in the front, trying to be in more conformance with the community.
Wasn't it, the neighbor, she brought some pitches in, he brought some pitches in.
Can't hear you.
Neighbors brought some pitches in, their butters.
There was one neighbor that brought a picture, but.
Behind.
She was not affected anywhere.
At that point, but is she gonna be affected now?
Either way, by what we were doing before, or what we were proposing to do before, or what we're proposing to do now.
We are moving the house forward, so we're actually gonna.
Because we're actually getting out of her view rather than blocking it.
All right, so, so what's before us, either we make him go to eight pitch and confirm, but doesn't go with the town, with the neighbor character, or just, I mean, he's still be under the bylaw, so I don't know what's the wishes, only four and a half.
I don't have, I don't have a big problem with the, the bylaw says they can go 35 feet, so I don't have a real big issue with it. We're the ones that held it back. My question would be, eight foot ceilings, could you get by with seven and three quarters? Would you drop three inches on three floors and that's?
Well, we can't drop.
Three quarters of a foot instead of going.
Well, we could only do it on two floors if we were gonna do that, and that gets us six inches, a foot more or a foot and a half more, you know, we're talking about that much.
I know what six inches is, I'm very familiar with six inches.
Six inches would be six from 41.
What do you think, Wilma? Is it the character of the neighborhood or the?
First of all, they got the ridge for 41 inches, which to me, it should be 35, the height, for the height of the building.
That's from the lower, that's from the lowest.
You have to subtract the.
You gotta go from the half.
But if they took the six inches off, you'd, that would bring it down to 35.
That's 41 feet and a half.
Yeah, 41.
So it'll be 40.
Nine and six.
It'll be 40 and a half.
If they took.
Six inches of 41 feet.
Yeah, would bring it down to at least 40.
Forty point.
Forty point five.
If they took and made seven, seven, why don't they need eight foot ceilings, for one thing?
People like see a high ceiling.
Nice.
I mean, windows aren't gonna be eight foot, windows, are they?
No, but if you heat with oil, you help the Middle East community with their oil problem, because you're heating more.
You're not in the oil business, so we.
I'm not in the oil business.
But we would probably, it will be natural gas, but.
No, I'm just saying, I have, I have an eight foot ceiling in my house and I, it is, any way that I could cut it down to seven, I would, because I found this past winter so hard to heat. I mean, you put ceiling, you put ceiling fans, pushes it down, but it's still.
But actually, a seven foot ceiling would be legal.
And I still think that it should get down closer to 35.
A building code.
All right, hold on.
From the.
Okay, what size joists is?
The basement up, I mean.
We're down two by tens, we can't go any less.
And we are down a foot and a half from the original height of the house that we proposed.
All right, I just made my move on it, that's it.
Jake, what's your?
I think they went down from the last time they're here, they made it a little bit shorter. They did what we said, I don't see a problem at all with it.
Oh.
They only, they only took it down.
I don't have an issue, but isn't announced here.
Anyone in the audience for or against? Ken, any comment?
No.
All right, what's the wishes?
You know, I really don't think it's a big deal. I know a neighbor was moaning about their view, but I didn't, I didn't even, my recollection is that I don't think that this, this project impacted the view.
They moved the building too forward, so.
Yeah, so, I don't know, based on all that, I make a, I may make a motion to go ahead and approve the minor modification, allow them to go an extra foot and a half, change it from 27 feet to 28.5 feet.
All right, do I have a second there?
Second.
Second by Jake, and that's based on plans drafted by Lockwood Architect, revised on 5/20/2018?
Yes.
So second by Jake, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Oppose.
Abstain, 4-1-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, where's my, I just had a copy, there we go. Okay, 4-1-0. Where is it? Major's. It's under the minutes. Oh, here it is, right here. And we wanna write something here. So now, did we do anything the last time when we approved this? Did, is this a, did we write anything or we never signed?
Yeah, all you're doing is, is.
Just write the minor modification.
All you're doing is saying a minor modification to 28 point.
Modification granted. 4-1-0 complies with zoning. Not detrimental.
You're modifying condition number two of the decision.
Okay.
No condition, condition 28 feet, six inch max.
And that is modifying condition, which one?
Condition number two.
Okay, there you go.
You sign it? You might as well sign it while you got it in your hand. Both pages? You gotta sign it two places, mister.
All right.
Get it again and get it down to a dissenting voter.
All right, boys, pass it. Sign it, pass it back. All right. Okay, hide, all right. Site plan 13-18, site plan review, special permit Wareham Family Dental, 43 and 45 Sandwich Road.
Are we done with this? Yeah, let me, you done with that? Has everybody signed it?
Wilma.
Except for Wilma? Thank you. This one's getting read back in, is read in for the first time.
All right.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on May 23rd, 2018 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Surface Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571. To consider petition number 13-18 for a site plan review slash special permit from the requirements of Article 14, Section 1460, and Article 15 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Wareham Family Dental, 108 High Street, Wareham, Mass. 02571, seeking to create a new dental office in a residential zone located at 43 and 45 Sandwich Road, Wareham, Mass. That's on Assessors Map 45, lots 1013, F46, F55B in the MR30 zoning district.
Very well, name and address for the records, gentlemen?
Yeah, yeah, hi, I'm Dr. Webby, the owner of Wareham Family Dental. I'm in here for site plan review, trying to relocate my existing office on 108 High Street to 45 Sandwich Road. And the, the rest of the plan is with Bill, he did all the, the site planning. He can answer all these questions if you have.
All right, very well, name, just for the records, Bill, your name?
I'm Bill Madden from GAF Engineering, here in behalf of Wareham Family Dental.
Okay, let's hear it.
Well, can I just reflect, just, I think it's more of a point of order than anything else. The last hearing we had a couple of weeks ago was, we discussed the use variance.
Right.
Which was approved, which was approved by the board, but there were also several other variances that we were also gonna be seeking that were not advertised at that, at that time. And as I, if I remember correctly, we were to re-advertise including those, those variances and including site plan review. The legal notice that was published didn't include a notification of the variances. It only speaks to site plan review. And just as, just as a point of order on the, on the notice, it, you know, we're not seeking relief from any sections of 1460 or Article 15 of the bylaw, we're, we're here to present compliance with each one. In fact, 1460 was decided on at the prior, at the prior meeting.
So. So 1460 would be the use?
1460 was the use, which we decided.
Okay.
Two weeks ago.
And Article 15, you're gonna comply, is that?
Yes.
So really, all you're asking for is a special permit?
But you have any more variances you're asking for?
Well, our lot area is, is 28,000 in the MR30, in the MR30 zoning district. Our front yard setback due to existing conditions was 17.2 feet or 17.5 feet. That was an existing condition created by a roadway layout change. And then we are also seeking a small waiver from the landscape buffer requirements at the rear of the building, where we did not achieve 20 feet, but we supplemented fencing and plant, and landscaping to, to accommodate an equal for, for that 20 foot, for that 20 foot area. So I mean, we're happy to go forward with the hearing. I know Charlie hasn't done his review yet, but I just wanted to be clear with you on that, just for clarity sake. You know, there's a lot at stake here for Dr. Webby and, you know, certainly wanna ensure that we follow, follow the rulebook to the extent.
All right, but the front, you don't need a variance because it's an existing. So what else for variance you're asking?
On the 20, the pre-existing.
The size of the lot?
Can't make the lot bigger.
You can't make the lot bigger, right?
Right, but.
It was existing and the use that was granted.
Why didn't you bring it up last time at once? With the size and everything. But why would he need a variance if it's an existing?
I don't.
Non-conforming, why would you need a variance?
Well, I think that, I don't necessarily think that we do, but I think, taking a conservative viewpoint on it, we thought that it would probably be more appropriate to let you make that determination than me to be presumptive and make it, make it for you. So I'm in agreement with you that it is a pre-existing, they are pre-existing non-conforming uses, and I think Section 1533 or 1534 of the bylaw covers, covers both of those.
So what, so where do you get the idea that you need a variance?
It's.
I mean, last time we changed the use, so it becomes existing, non-conforming, so what are you gonna?
Okay, that's, well, I just.
Agree, Ken?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we're just opening, you asking for something you don't need?
Then I just, I just wanted to be on the safe side of things and bring it to your attention.
Right.
And we don't have any problem going forward as long as the board is comfortable and.
I'm okay with it, I don't think you need a variance for the size because it is what it is. You needed the use variance and it becomes, it becomes a commercial property with existing non-conforming, so we keep going, special permit.
That's fine.
All right?
Yes.
Is everybody on, on board with that?
I'm good.
You good? Good. Wilma, you good with this, so we can proceed?
I, I was, I was just trying to look over their plans.
Well, he's gonna explain it to us.
Remove things.
All right, let's hear it.
I, I just feel it.
He's gonna explain it to us. Let him bring his case down.
Okay.
Okay, thanks very much on that prior notice. This is just your image of the, of the site that we, that we looked at. Here's the location of 4345 Sandwich Road. You can see some of the other surrounding uses, surrounded to the next residential in that zoning district, in the MR30 zoning district. Sheet number three on your plan set is the existing conditions plan. It indicates existing building. You can see that the MR30, Cardiology Associates, there's a parking lot that consumes the majority of the lot. There's an existing dwelling to the west. There's a small garage that's called to be, well, actually has been demolished. And this is the building of around 41 hundred square feet, 4200 square feet that we're looking to renovate for the purpose of the, the purpose of the dental office. You might recall that there's a, there's a 55 foot curb opening on Sandwich Road that currently exists. There's also another opening on Sandwich Road, it's 51 feet on the eastbound side of the road. Those are existing open curb cuts and what we're showing in our development plan is to, is to close those curb cuts in to a reasonable degree and have our standard 24 foot wide curb cut with 20 or 30 foot radiuses entering.
On that, on that topic, I'm looking at the file here, I'm the only one that's had the opportunity to see this. We have a letter from the Wareham Fire Department. They're requesting that you increase to 25 feet from 20 feet on that radius.
That's correct.
Okay.
We're in receipt of that letter.
Okay.
We just need those final modifications of the plan, just pending Charlie's review of the submitted drawings, we'd like to do them all together at one, at once. We're easily, we can easily accommodate those, that 25 foot radius as opposed to the 20 that show on the plan.
Bill, if I interrupt you, the state might ask you for 50 entering and leave in 30.
We understand that.
So you might need a 50 coming in and 30 leaving.
Yeah, well, I think that due to the nature of the vehicles that are gonna be entering the site, there're gonna be passenger cars, there's no delivery required. Our experience has been that we're able to use a smaller curb radii entering into the site, but we do need to go to Mass Highway and would, they won't, they will not review our curb cut plan until such time as we have an approval through the, through the planning board. But we are aware of the fact that that could be the change that is necessary to make.
I think they're gonna go minimum 30 and 30, most likely coming in, they're gonna ask for 50. But anyway, we have to listen to the fire department, coming in, what they want?
They want 25.
25, so at least you gotta do coming in.
Yeah, so if we moved it to, if the, if Matt's doc required us to go to 30, we would exceed the 25, so we'd be complying with the highway in Mass.
What's the Wareham bylaws, the laws in Wareham, what's that radius?
I bet they were 20s.
20s they are, okay. All right, keep going.
So from the west enough to help, we have a driveway entrance that enters into the site. We show 21 stall parking layout. We have customer or patient spaces on the west side of the parking lot. We have a handicap and accessible space on the eastbound side of the western line, as well as three other additional spaces. The entrance into the building, moving on the side, we have architectural plans that that will show that. I don't know if they were part of the submission, I think they were, but I'm certain. Going to the, going to the, to the south of the site, we show another nine parking stalls to the rear on this property is the Wareham Housing Authority, I think Zagwam Village is what it's named. Thoughts up to that, it's down on a lower tier. We have a range changing around, around the, our parking lot to, to the range at the rear of the Wareham Housing Authority property. We also show a dumpster located at the eastbound end of that, of that parking stall and the area that's on the east side of the site that's currently paved. If you made a site inspection out there, you'll note that it's a little bit flat adjacent to the building, but it drops right off, there's kind of like a steep incline there. It's not really suitable for parking, so we didn't wanna get involved with retaining walls and large grade changes, so we chose to provide a pretty substantial landscape buffer on that side, on that side of the building. So this overview plan, which is really just our layout and our utilities, indicates how we're gonna lay out the property. We've designated two parking spaces for the residential unit in our, in our parking schedule. So there's, there's space for, for those, it's noted right here on the plan, those are the two spaces for, for the residential use. Each one of the parking stalls is provided with a, with a wheel stop that'll be driven in, that'll be placed on the surface of the new pavement, it'll be driven, we'll have rerides and drive those into the ground to keep them in place. The complete perimeter of the parking lot will be constructed with a Cape Cod berm, so we'll be able to direct all of our storm water to these paved waterways that'll discharge into rain garden, stormwater management systems. That's what our goal here is, just have small isolated drainage areas that handle segments of the parking lot as opposed to one large drainage area that might be at the end of a, end of a drain pipe. So we have, we have these rain gardens here on the entrance, on both sides of the entrance. We got one also in the, on the eastern, southeastbound portion of the site. That's pretty much what we've done there. We also call for a, we also call for a sidewalk to be placed in front of the building. We call to close in that 51 foot curb cut with grant curving. We, we realize Mass Highway will require us to place grant curving along that curb cut, so we're gonna close that in to just isolate our entranceway to this location.
And you're gonna continue with Cape Cod berm?
No, we're gonna use granite here.
Right.
We're gonna granite at the radius and we'll turn it, it'll transition to Cape Cod berm once we're onto the property.
All right, so you're gonna need a waiver for that, right? Because Wareham requires concrete?
I thought you required both, allow both.
I mean, depends, if you're gonna push the snow over the, the retention area, I mean, Cape Cod berm is fine.
Yeah, well, we don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna push our snow, our snow people here.
This area should be concrete, but this area is okay curb. There was the building concrete, that's gonna have to be, but the other side you could do Cape Cod berm.
We don't have any problem changing that to, to concrete curb. I suspect Charlie would probably bring that up.
He will pick on it, yeah.
So it's a planning vision you could expect. So it's a planning vision you could expect.
So, I hate to interrupt, but I am. I like to interrupt. Right now, there's two entrances and you can drive right in front of the building. You're gonna put one entrance and eliminate one. Not be able to drive right in front of the building. So, I'm good with all that. Dr. Brown has the office next door, and that second entrance that you're eliminating, is that their only way in and out, or do they have another entrance?
They have, they have their own.
They have their own over here.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're just building in with grant curving the area in front of our parking line extensions.
I got it.
Leaving his unchanged.
Okay.
And that's pretty much it with the, just with the site layout. The next plan goes into a little more detail with the drainage areas. We have drainage areas, we have the rain garden that will be essentially a 74-bay going into a larger rain garden area. That'll also be provided with an area drained in the bottom of it. It's appropriated pipe to handsome exfiltration of storm water, treated storm water. It's treated in that first bay and then we'll go into the next area. We saw some leaching galleys just below that. Those leaching galleys are there to discharge the roof runoff. Fifty more are roof runoff and running that to those leaching galleys. That roof runoff is considered uncontaminated runoff, so we're not required to place a 74-bay or anything of that nature in that treatment train. So we're directly discharging that into a drainage gallons. On the west, east side of the driveway, we hear the same concept as these rain gardens. I'm sorry, it's rain garden type 74-bays and a larger rain garden system identical in nature to the one that I previously described. And we do the same thing on the rear of the parking lot, we do another one there. So what we have is a situation where she flowing drainage this manner. We're keeping all of our stuff on drainage on the site from the curb cut line, then we take it to the other half of the parking lot and draining it into our 74-bay into the drainage basin on the eastern side of the site. In a similar fashion, as to the western side, we have another series of leaching galleys that will take the roof runoff from the other half of the roof. We expect that there's gonna be a bridge lying down the center of the roofs or a cutter system to be able to pick up half of the roof and discharge each half into the leaching gallons.
Are you gonna change the existing roof, or what's there is staying?
I think the existing roof is gonna change to some degree, it'll probably be steepened up and, you know, be-
The front is like a pitch and the back is like a membrane right now. Gonna be the same, or?
We're gonna need-
It's gonna stay the same, yes. But there's some architectural design on the side of the building.
Oh, so you're gonna have, it's gonna have a facade if you want.
Yes, facade.
The building is serviced by town water, it's also serviced by town sewer, both buildings. The sewer service is shown over here on the east side of the building. The sewer service for the residential use is shown coming out of the rear of the residential unit. But that's pretty much what we're looking to do with respect to degrading the drainage. So at one high point, we're splitting the drainage in one direction and going to place in the market zone.
Well, the front, where do you start picking up the drainage for the front, like where the handicap is? Roughly, that goes to the front and start going to the back?
Yes.
Where the house is, you probably have to pick it up at 10th on that corner. At 34, he might have, in front of the corner, it's like too flat, it might puddle there. You probably need to pick-
We have to add a little bit of topsoil and see to shut that runoff into the parking lot.
Yeah.
You can do that.
Because it's 34 and you got 34, it's gonna puddle. Maybe lift it at 10th or so. You know what I'm talking about, in front of the house?
Yeah, right here.
That corner, yeah.
This is 34.
Yeah.
And this 34 here.
Probably lift it at 10th. I'm sure Charlie gonna pick on that too, so.
Yeah, we can add some spot grades to clarify the grade in that area. The landscaping plan is fairly substantial. Yeah, Ed Fuller did the landscaping for us, so I think you've seen his work before.
Yeah.
But you can see that we have the landscape buffer that we established over here for residential uses. The rain garden's pretty heavily vegetated, as is the 74-bay. Similarly on all three locations. The rear of the property, we have both fencing and, we have both fencing and plant material in front of that. So that's what we're trying to do, is at least screen the turbid on the parking lot from the outside area. And along the eastern side of the property, we have a series of shrubs and trees in addition to our drainage basin. So we think there's a pretty healthy landscaping plan compared to this. So there'll be a huge improvement over on what exists, so I think it'll look pretty good. It's on the plan list, it's fairly substantial.
Do you have, in the back, do you have 20 feet between the parking and the neighbors? In the back, yeah. 20 feet setback?
That's where we were a little shy in this corner, and that's why we, that's why we thought that we would place a fence in, a fence in, I'm saying for the lack of that 20-foot-
All right.
20-foot landscape buffer requirement.
All right, so you might need, so you need a waiver on that too? Well, we'll wait to hear from Charlie's comment, so we make the waiver at once, okay?
But that's, that's pretty much it, it's, you know, I think it's a fairly substantial rehab of the existing site, should look pretty good when it is all completed. And would that indicate any questions, Mike?
All right. My, like I said, we'll wait to hear from Charlie. By my recommendation, all the curbs that, next to the building, I would like to see it concrete. It will work better for you. You know what I'm saying, like here, that radius and the bar on the front. Because with the plow, it's gonna mess everything up. So you could plow all the snow and pile it on this side, to the left, to the right side, if you understand which road. It will work better with the Cape Cod berm. But towards the building, it's probably better you do concrete, I think. We'll see what other-
We have a handicap ramp that comes up from the handicap space, so that's gonna be elevated with our steps, so I don't think right here that we're gonna do any concrete.
No, but coming in or leaving, yeah, this side. That's granite, you come down, and that piece, yeah, once you finish the granite, continue with concrete. I would continue with concrete, that section, yeah.
Excuse me, you know, I know, I heard you say you're gonna put wheel stops, and that's on the south side of the parking lot, I assume?
To have them at least.
Everywhere?
Well, everywhere other than the-
What's, is that something like that the town, is that something that we impose on you, or is that something that you think is necessary?
Well, the reason we're placing them here is that we don't really want the patients to be driving into the landscape and drainage. So if we have a wheel stop there, at least they'll be able to stop short. Over here, we have a little bit more of an open area, we're looking to pile some snow, snow storage area, this grass area here.
But, that's the reason I'm asking, you say the word snow, and every time I see those wheel stops, after the first winter or two, the snowplows have destroyed them, they're all crooked, the rebar is sticking out of the ground.
You gotta fix it.
I personally just don't like them, like, you know, I just don't like them. I don't, you know, I don't know what they cost, and I don't care either way. It wouldn't make, change my vote one way or the other if they're there or not. If I just question, instead of buying 22 wheel stops, could you put granite across the back and let the plow play with that?
Oh, granite is pretty pricey.
Pretty expensive?
Yeah, it's like, I don't know, better than $40 a foot installed.
Okay, that's the reason, I guess, that's, I'm like, yeah, I just don't, you know, almost, it's pretty hard to go to a parking lot and find those wheel stops, you know, in and straight after a snowstorm.
Yeah, they do require maintenance.
Yeah. They don't, you know.
Yeah, a lot of maintenance.
It doesn't affect my opinion of the project.
Okay.
We'd be happy to eliminate from the project if that's-
That's not, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just, you know.
I understand.
I'm just-
The dumpster, you gonna put it in a fence or just leave it open?
I'm sorry?
The dumpster.
The dumpster, where's it going?
It's going back here. We didn't think that there was a need to impose, well, we actually can show a smaller closure around.
Yeah, okay.
We usually close dumpsters.
All right, very good. Well, let's start ask some question, Wilma?
Nothing right now.
Nothing. Ken, do you have a comment?
Do you have a zoning compliance table included in the package?
It's on the front cover sheet, we usually just have on the front cover sheet, talks about the zone front, side yard setback and what's provided, what exists.
Thank you.
Jimmy?
No, I put in enough that I don't have any more questions.
Anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor or against? Okay, we hear none. So I guess, we heard the story, we'll, you guys wanna add anything before we let him on his way? We're gonna have to wait for Charlie's comment.
Do we need to vote to approve this, this rock sack?
That's for Charlie's money?
Yeah.
You don't usually vote that-
53G, do we have to take any action on that, or is it gonna happen, if they-
We do a separate thing, that's not, not just this way.
Right.
We do a separate at the end.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I think that we've already initiated, I think we gave you the W9 deposit army under review.
That's correct.
All right, well, like I said, the sign.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, the sign, we have a sign, we have a sign.
Yeah, I see it. Is that an existing, or?
That you proposed.
You're gonna need a variance for that one.
For the sign?
Yeah, it's right on the property line. Isn't it, or I'm seeing things?
No, it goes right, I didn't know there was a setback requirement on the signage.
I don't think there is in Village Two.
That's not Village, that's residential.
Well, it's not.
What's a setback on a sign, 20 feet, no?
They keep changing it.
It's MR-30.
MR-30?
I think 20 feet.
I don't, I don't-
Ken is looking at-
Now that you bring up the signage.
You could come in a separate hearing for the sign, so we're not gonna hold the project for the sign.
No, I understand that, but we have a picture of the sign, but the other question that we had is, there's an existing-
Existing pole.
There's an existing pole mounted sign out there now. You know, we've had some discussion, Dr. Webby and I, about retaining that pole and perhaps putting another sign on that. I thought we might just talk to you about it before we initiate any discussion with your staff.
One second, what'd you get, Ken, on that sign? I think it's 20 feet, that is setbacks, but let him look. So, okay, yeah, that's the existing sign. You'd like to put it across the sign, you don't like it the side?
No, I think that we're, you know, we're just discussing what we might wanna do with that other sign where it already exists.
I mean, if you hold the same setback with that sign, move it maybe 10 feet in, probably works better for you than going.
Yeah, we think that the visibility, if we pull that thing in front of the street, that, you know, won't really be highly visible from the roadway. We think that patients, young patients alike, might have a little difficult time spotting the sign.
Yeah.
So.
On, in Section 11, 1117, 1117 placement, there's nothing in here about setbacks. It simply says, no sign shall be erected and it's affixed to, you know, private property, except maybe allowed special permit, shall be mounted above the roof ridge, that's a height. No projecting sign shall exceed into a vehicular, public or private way. So it can't hang over the road, okay? No freestanding sign together with supporting shall extend to a height, back to height.
Definitely have a setback.
Stallback compliant architecture, nothing in here about setback that I see, but-
At least you'd wanna consider the impact of visibility on the, people pulling out into the way, into the travel way.
Over here is 117, is what I-
Freestanding setback right here.
So we may have to pull that back a little bit from the street. The stop wire coming out of the, out of the parking lot, I think that we grade those slopes off a little bit, so this is elevation 32, we're like, I think this is pretty rough, I don't know. We'll have to look at that and make the adjustments so that we don't interrupt the streets from people pulling out of the parking lot.
All right. I know there's a setback, but I don't know where, but I know it can be higher than 18 feet. Seven feet. I know that, and, but I can't find the setback. It does have setback, because they made me move the sign once. Anyway, Charlie will pick on it. So we'll wait for Charlie's comment, and the question is, where we continue with? Do you have architectural plan, or are you working on it?
Working on it.
All right, very good. It looks good to me, but of course, we'll wait for Charlie, we'll look at the architectural plan then. And we're gonna push you until 13 is tough. And the 27, Carl is not here.
13% is tough.
Yeah, we have too many hearings on June 13. Unless, we could, if Jan read the minutes and she could sit on it, or Carl could continue it after if he reads the minute, the minutes, so he could continue it, he can miss one. So hopefully, yeah, hopefully Jan will read the minutes, I'll ask her.
Okay.
So when she could sit for Carl. And hopefully, we have Charlie's comment, but that's the 27. June 27.
And I think that what we'd like to do is, if it's all right with the board is, coordinate with Charlie and try to make the revision so that we can satisfy his concerns-
Exactly.
At that next meeting.
Right, that'd be very good if you could comply with all the questions, for all the comments, and make sure with that curb, so you don't have to do it twice. Call this guy Broderick, I guess his name?
Matt, yeah.
Matt? What was the agenda?
What are you looking for?
All right. All right, so, so you guys good, you wanna add anything? So we'll continue till the 27.
I had-
Can I have a mayor?
Here it is. So moved.
So we have a motion by Jim to continue 13-18. May, June 27, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, stand.
June 18, right?
Yeah, 27.
June 27?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. It looks good to me.
Thank you.
I think it's gonna be a big improvement to that.
Yeah, we're happy with the way that we're working out on the site.
Yeah, exactly. Very, very good, thank you, thank you guys, have a good one. All right, next victim, Lenny, we continued. 15-18, Bob Trucey, 276, Glenn Charlie wrote.
They're here?
Yeah.
This has to be read in? Thank you. The zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing on May twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, at six-thirty PM in room three-twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, zero-two-five-seven-one. To consider petition number fifteen dash eighteen for a variance from the requirements of Article Six, Section six-twenty-one, and Article fourteen of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Brock Tousie, Tousie Enterprises, Inc., two-eighty-two Glen Charlie Road, East Wareham, Mass., zero-two-five-three-eight. Seeking permission to build on lots combined to, from an unbuildable lot due to the lot being undersized for the zoning district. Located at two-seventy-six Glen Charlie Road, East Wareham, Mass., assesses map one-twenty-seven, lot one-zero-zero-seven-B in the R-one-thirty zoning district.
Hey, a good name and address for the record?
Uh, Brock Tousie, two-eighty-two Glen Charlie Road, East Wareham.
All right, wanna let us know what are you doing?
Yes, I'm trying to get this lot deemed a buildable lot. Much to my surprise, it wasn't. I went to the building department to get a certificate saying it's buildable. I have the lot sold. And I have a plan, in the packet, there's a plan from the planning board stamped in August of two thousand, I mean, of nineteen, yeah, nineteen-seventy-three. After this law went into effect, saying it didn't come under that law, so I'm kind of confused as to why it's not buildable when they've already said, the planning board already said it is. We've been paying taxes for forty-four years on a residential lot, and.
So, so how many square feet is the lot now?
Well, it's two-point-six-seven acres, I guess it's a hundred and twelve.
Two-point-six-seven?
Acres.
And the current zoning asks for three acres?
A hundred and thirty thousand.
But when it was created, it was a heck of a lot less.
Well, it was, we had, no, we had fourteen acres, and the long story is, we, when I got out of the Navy, I wanted to build a house in the campground, the town wouldn't allow it. So my father bought this piece of land and I found a place I wanted to build, which is the one-thousand-seven-C right beside it. Built my, and they subdivided out this two acres, and with this piece was left over. We didn't create the lot as a lot, it was just left over from cutting off the two acres where I decided I wanted to build my house, not knowing it's gonna create a firestorm, so.
But, my question, and I don't know if it's, my question is, when they cut this off, was the zoning three acres at that time?
It was.
Okay.
But yet the planning board signed a, you know, I have, you have the plan, saying it doesn't require approval under that law.
Okay. Well, for the record here, I also have a letter from the selectman's office to read in to the record. And it's obviously on letterhead town of Wareham, zoning board, addressed to the zoning board of appeals. And it says regarding requests from Brock Tousie for a variance of twelve-point-six-seven acres versus three-point-zero acres required. I think that's a typo, it's two-point-six-seven.
Two-point-six-seven is already meant to be a typo.
So, let me correct that on my. It's two-point-six-seven. The Board of Selectmen met on Tuesday, May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, and voted in support of Mr. Tousie's variance request. This is something we do not involve ourselves with, but pass circumstances warrant our asking for consideration. The hardship is based on the prior relationship between the Board of Selectmen and Mr. Tousie as concerns regarding soil removal and the claims of polluting town wells. The result was proved false and has caused financial distress and the need to sell this particular plot of land. Thank you for your consideration, Alan H. Slaven, chairman.
All right, very good. Uh, Wilma, you have a comment? No?
Looking at it and checking things, I don't see any problem, whereas, as long as he's approved by the, uh, conservation and board of health, I.
Okay.
See.
It's already been perked and passed, and then that plan you have that's got the yellow on it, that shows what, how the house can be built without involving conservation. It's outside the parameters of the conservation ruling, and the I-one-thirty as well, because that is different setbacks. If we, the person buying it wants to do something different, you can go for a conservation. We've already been, we've already had the chairman of the Conservation Commission help to look at it, to verify it.
Yeah, you're gonna have to sign off anyway. All right, Jake, you wanna say anything?
Uh, I think it's a good project, nothing else.
Bob? Ken, any comment?
No.
Anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor, favor?
Yes.
Come for a question. Speak your name for the record.
Jerry Stefanski, I live on Glen Charlie Road.
Yeah.
And three comments. First, I moved to Glen Charlie ten years ago, and Brock was the first person to stop by and, and say hello to me, and has been helpful to me throughout those ten years. Second, the land at Glen Charlie is now a undeveloped vacant lot, which is basically an eyesore. And I feel that putting a house there with a landscaped lawn will much improve the highway. Third, money, 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 I'm on a finance committee, and I look at this as a means of increasing fees to the town, both for the, the, uh, building of the house and all the permits. And secondly, if you put a home as much value as the land is, you basically double the amount of money that the town would receive from this piece of land. And as you know, the town can use any, uh, any, any funds that are available. So I would ask you to approve the variance.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yes?
Everybody, my name is Mike Cheney. I'm the person attempting to purchase this piece of land. I grew up here at Wareham in the seventies. I later moved away to the city. I've been working in Boston Public Schools for the past thirty years. It's kind of been my hope to, I plan to retire in June, and I'm hoping to purchase land to build a home and return to the area. I have friends and family still in the area. And having been in city life, to me, two-point-seven acres is, uh, you know, monumental size, because I live in a tiny little lot with people, you know, five feet away from me. So I'm very excited to build a modest home there. I'm not looking to, you know, I wanna fit in with the community. My stepfather lives up the road, and I just wanna build a nice, modest home there, and I'm hoping that this goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? One, come on down.
Ken, what's, uh, Van Saxon, then, MGM?
My name is Anthony Zialvi. I reside at two-seventy-two Glen Charlie Road. I'm not here to be in opposition or in favor of. What I would like is just some information on how this is going to affect my piece of property.
Are you in a butter?
I am at two-seventy-two, he's at two-seventy-six, I believe. There's a lot between us.
Yeah, it's a small lot that's.
Small between us.
Not buildable with enough.
That has been in disrepair for over fifty years. I've lived with a foundation that's, uh, should be removed. I've had children going in there and having parties, and we finally got the owner at one time to clean it up, so that we eliminated that problem, but that's not here or there. I'm more concerned that I don't end up with another lot with a foundation that never gets finished, and is left, leaves the lot in disrepair. I've seen no plans on it.
Yeah, well, I think the gentleman who's buying it, if he's gonna pay, I mean, he's, he's, he's planning to build on it, we, we hope, and the market is strong, and apparently the gentleman's here and wants to build on it.
Well, understand me, I'm not here to object to it. I don't, I, not that type of person that would wanna stop somebody from building a home or buying a land or making progress. I'd just like to know what.
If they start the project, you'd like them to finish it.
Exactly, that's exactly.
I heard ya.
That's exactly what I'd like. That's all, nothing, nothing more than that, and it would increase the value of my property.
Definitely.
And I'd be very, rather than decrease it.
Very well, thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak? All right, uh, I hear none. Let's move to close this public hearing.
So moved.
I have a second to close public hearing.
Second.
Second by Wilma, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion to grant the variance.
All right, it's Jim make a motion to grant the variance based that it meets.
No conditions.
As presented.
Yep.
Because it meets, I think the applicant has met all the statute of MGM for the A section ten. Do you have a second for that? Second by Carl, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, five-zero-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, let's sign it. Thank you. I need my sugar. Thanks.
Oh, I got it, I got it.
Sorry.
Guy on Gas Monkey gets beer.
Yeah, he's supposed to.
He got water? Sorry, I have one, thank you.
All right, um, where are we? Losing my agenda.
What are you losing, your agenda? Well, that's what happens to you people with these hidden agendas. I am a sap, I know.
Is it hidden?
All right. Continue public hearing. It's three-hundred Glen Charlie Road here?
Say it again, Bob?
Uh, no, it's not, but, Ken, what's, he always continues this one. They never show up, the forty-six dash seventeen, what happened to that one?
I don't know, they didn't contact the office, so I have no idea.
How long, what's the deadline to decide on that?
Forty-seven sixteen. It's right on here, I think. No?
It'd be, it'd be, um.
Forty-six seventeen.
Sixty days from the close of the hearing.
Well, we never closed that, we never opened it.
Do we even hear this at all?
No. Yeah, we did open it and continue it and continue it and continue it.
Continue it, yeah.
It's, it's been over eight, it's been started since last year.
All right.
It was initiated in seventeen.
I think Carl had a thought on making a motion, I'd let, I'd.
All right, forty-six dash seventeen, what's the wish, wishes?
I make a motion, we continue without prejudice.
Continue or?
Deny without prejudice, sorry.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that, without prejudice.
Without prejudice, they can bring back.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Good. All right, continue public hearing, thirty-one dash seventeen, modification of site plan review, Jay Donigan, twenty-four nineteen and twenty-four seventeen Cranberry Highway and South Toby Road.
Good evening.
You guys must like us, you come here often.
You're always very accommodating. Matt Smith, a professional engineer with Bowler Engineering, here tonight on behalf of Jay Donigan, who is to my left. And also with us tonight is Sean Kelly from Van Ness and Associates. This application actually started last year as well, but we've been diligently working on this. As you recall, when we were here last, you granted us a variance so that we could proceed with the Wendy's at the corner of the property on Cranberry Highway and Toby Road. And tonight, we're here seeking approval of the site plan modification. We've since the last meeting submitted revised plans, and you've approved this plan once before. There's really two changes that have changed to the plan since the original approvals that allowed us to build the Aldi and the Autozone and all that. The first is the Wendy's, that's quite obvious, and then we've modified, and I'll point to some plans in a minute. We've modified the space adjacent to the Aldis to increase the size of that building by three thousand, thirty-two hundred square feet, so.
Wilma? This is it. Thank you.
Your original approvals on this space just to the, the west or planned up of the Aldi facility, we had a sixty-foot deep space that was here. We've increased the depth of that to ninety feet, just to attract some additional tenant interest, and that's a total of thirty-two hundred square feet. The entire area is not consistent in depth though. We've actually got a space that's about seventy-five feet in the middle here. And then it goes out, we articulated it from the building just to give it some architectural interest, and we removed eleven spaces that we had behind the building. It really doesn't change the site plan any, it just adds a little bit of density. The car, uh, the parking count still has the same drainage, everything works exactly the same. The balance of the site is exactly what you approved when you originally approved this project, so I think that's an extremely minor change. And then the other modification is the Wendy's facility that we've had some discussions on. That Wendy's is a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot drive-through facility, it's the modern prototype. We've got a total of twenty-four parking spaces that are provided in that area. Very standard drive-through circulation pattern on the site. What we discussed when we've talked about it in the past is what's unique about it is, there's, there's no way that, that the traffic impacts from that, no matter how many cars queue up at the drive-through could possibly impact the surrounding roadways, because it's really just accessed from internal circulation lines. Very minor increases in impervious area from what you saw.
Unipurpose access?
Yeah, oh yeah, thank you. Very few changes to the, um, the impervious area, went up a little bit. We had designed the system conservatively the first time, so when we ran the calculations again, everything still works, it's an improvement over the existing condition.
What is that now? What's the percentage now?
It is less than what zoning allows, so it's, it means it meets it. When you look at it on a percentage basis, it actually didn't change. Sixty-three percent of the lot is covered.
Is the building next to the Autozone stay in the same size?
Yes, yep, we're, we're, very good point. When we first made the submission, we had a lot of talks about increasing the size of that building and changing it. Some of the feedback wasn't great. It's back to what it was originally, so that's unchanged and that's what's originally approved.
The one across is not changing.
Correct, correct.
Are you guys planning to build them soon?
Yep, so, so what we're looking to do is build the Wendy's. We do need to go to talk to Mass Highway still to update the permit. We don't expect we're gonna have to change anything other than the words written on the permit. And with the building adjacent to the Aldi, what we're planning to do is actually build that seventy-five-foot-deep section that I spoke of, and then not build the balance of that building just yet, because we don't have tenant interest at this point. These, so what we'll have is, this building is going to be a mix of uses that's getting constructed, and then we're gonna have this section of building constructed, then again, we'll break it up into two or three spaces with small expected retailers in there. And we're still trying to get some additional tenants to fill this out. Honestly, this could turn into a smaller building, it could turn into a separate building, we just haven't had the interest yet, and we're looking to get the place filled up and then see what.
How, how many, how many square feet that building by itself?
Uh, seventy-two hundred, so this square, almost square seven, two hundred square feet, this is three thousand square feet.
So, just to add one thing, the building, the building along Toby and the three thousand feet right next to Aldi, it's not leased. But I, I really believe that if we build it and it's tastefully done, as I think the shopping center is, then we'll get interest. Hope I'm right. Hope I'm right, but that's the plan.
So you've got some action on the freestanding building next to Autozone, and you're going to put, you're going to speculate on the shallow addition to Aldis?
Yes. Exactly right.
And then the thought is, we might end up, that last portion, the 7,200 square feet or whatever it is. It could be that we get a single user that says, oh, I need my building to be, you know, X feet by Y, and it might be slightly different. So we expect it's going to be similar density, but we don't know exactly what it's going to be.
Are you trying to show us the maximum?
And we expect we'll be back, or it will look exactly like what we're showing on this plan. The last thing that I didn't discuss, we've also shown a cross-connection that the planning board had asked for, I think it was the planning board, to the liquor store that's proposed on Toby Road. And we call that out here. And we're just saying, that's by others. The agreement with the butter was, yes, you can put that in. We still need to see final plans from them. So these plans don't, you know, we're...
They're going to use your...
They're going to use our driveway. We're okay with that, but we still need to see some final plans. So we've really just provided that as a placeholder on the plans, that we're fine with them installing...
They having any other access?
No.
They have from Toby Road.
They asked us for it.
Yeah. That wasn't our idea.
David Leifert.
No, no, no.
Yeah. It's, I think it's good planning to have it like that, but we just don't want to be obligated to put it in. They might not even do anything, so...
They showed interest in crossing?
Yeah.
Or the planning board wanted. They showed interest as well?
They contacted us, so whether it was induced by others or not, I don't know.
It was the planning board that asked for that to be considered, and they approached.
It'd be nice if you guys could make out the deal, so if they're shopping here, they could, instead of going...
Well, it's going to be the only way in and out, isn't it?
Yeah.
This is going to be their only...
That's the only way in and out.
It's going to be their only way in and out. It's going to be called Toll Entrance.
Oh, they don't have, they don't have their own entrance?
Sorry? No. It's just that access point.
This is good.
This right here?
Yeah, this is good.
And it's just, it's a small retail building.
Yeah.
It works, it works fine.
And you guys work, working it out?
Yeah.
We said, we said we would accommodate them.
I think that'd be great. I mean, minimize the...
One less curb cut on the road.
Yeah. It works.
Go get a hamburger at Wendy's and drive right through the parking lot and get a beer to drink on the way home.
The only thing with that big building, you might do 7,200. I'm, it just like, it looks like it's going to block the views. The harmony of the whole project, it becomes like an alley driving in. I don't know.
You get the view from the highway.
Yeah. I definitely want to hear Charlie's reviews from that.
What? I don't think it's going to be...
What is it?
They'll get their view. They'll get their visibility.
No, it's becoming claustrophobic, this entrance here.
He's saying if somebody tries to come through here, it gets busy.
Right.
In and out of here, no big deal.
Right.
Yeah.
That hasn't changed at all. It's just a little deeper, that's all.
So the approval...
It was long. It was...
Ah, okay, okay.
It was a much straighter line, but just like that.
I get you, I get you.
And so we've just moved out the back. I really, we'd be, you'd probably notice. I don't know that everybody in the room would notice.
Because it goes from 60 feet to 90, and you're still...
It's not as deep as the Aldi. The little tooth that sticks out at the end of the parking was there, whether the building was deep or shallow, or is it?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
Ken, what do you think?
I think it looks pretty good. It already meets all the criteria of the design that you had originally considered in your approval of the, of the site plan special permit.
Everybody happy tonight. Wilma, what do you think?
It's looking really good if they... I only have, I have one question about the corner drive-through.
Yep.
I mean, maybe I'm not seeing it, but you have only one way in and one way out?
That's correct. So the circulation...
It's just one way through. There are six spaces here that you can just pull out of and leave, but otherwise, it's just one-way flow around, and you come right through this driveway, and then you can go in either direction to get in and out of the site.
Yeah, I like that. Cool. All right. Jake, Carl. There's no one in the audience. Do you guys want to wait for Charlie's comments?
No.
I don't need them.
No, I don't need them either.
How about you have a condition that...
No. I make a, I make a motion that we accept it as presented and move on.
You got a second? You gotta, hold on. You gotta make a motion to close it first.
Okay.
Make a motion to close.
Second motion to close.
All in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
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 Okay, abstain, so we close the public hearing. Motion.
I make a motion to grant it as presented.
I second that motion.
Second by Jim. All in favor to approve as presented?
Aye.
31-17, say aye.
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 Okay, very well.